Cognitive disability for sure. I mean, he definitely is not 100%. He knew who I was and stuff, and sometimes he's in the conversation and sometimes he goes off. Yeah, but he can't stand up. And he's a big guy.
He's a big guy.
You know, so for her, she, it's not like she can lift.
No.
You know what I mean? So like the day that I went over to see him was, I think it was a Saturday morning, and he wound up sleeping the night before in his chair because she couldn't get him up. She can't lift him and he can't stand on his feet.
Nope.
His legs won't hold him. So I said, they got there. Why, why'd they send him home from the hospital without home, without home care?
Without home care, yeah.
And she said, hospice comes in like 10 minutes a day. They come in, check, do meds, and there's it. So she was working. I think she, hopefully by now, and I gotta check, but hopefully she got that straightened out, but I mean, he's a big guy. I mean, Burge's gotta be, what, 6'2", 6'3"? He's a big guy.
Yeah.
She can't, I mean, no. Yeah, and he, and she's in her 80s. Not like she's a kid. She can't be lifted up.
That's something, you know, my mom, you know, granted, near the end, she was thin-rail, but, you know, she was 5'11". And so, and she was, you know, big. She was large. You know, she had a planned surgery, but it was a gastric bypass. And so, you know, she was obviously very, very heavy at the time. And, you know, I went in for the surgery. Should've been there till Saturday. Came home on Friday. She just, my mom's never sits still. And then sometime on Saturday, she started complaining of pain. You know, she had, it was a late surgery, so it was up in Tacoma. They take her to St. Pete's, you know, Burge City, St. Pete's, and then they found out she had a late surgery there.
Welcome back.
Oh, really? Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't touch her.
Did you go back there?
They gotta go back up to Tacoma. So she had to wait, all wait till, you know, the next day, and then she didn't get the surgery till like even 1:00 or 2:00. It was like, you know, it says it was about an hour and a half, you know, 4:00, 4:30. I, I, I don't hurt any. She should've been out, you know, out by now. What's going on? And I was talking to my sister, and I'm like, Matt, I got bad feelings about this. And she was, oh, that's common with a child. I called the doctor. She just had a massive stroke like 10 minutes before that. She was still on the surgery table. And she had the stroke. So they, you know, usually they can give you those, you know, blood thinners.
My mother had a stroke.
Yeah, yeah. They're just. I'll separate the mass stroke out. And she was young. She was 55.
My mother had a massive stroke at 55. So she had a brain tumor. They were doing, they told her, I'm not crazy. So this is 30, 32 years ago. They told us she had three months to live. She's still alive. 32 years.
Wow.
I told her, she told my doctor, she had three months. She had a very large brain tumor. Sent a bunch of doctors, all to nothing they could do. Went to this one surgeon who said, I can remove that. He said, I'm gonna be up front. He said, might die on the table. Very risky surgery. Very, most likely will have a stroke. We know a way to avoid it. Don't know what the deficits will be. But if we do nothing, they're right. You got three months. So nothing to lose. Had the surgery, like I said, 32 years ago now. So I mean, she's been disabled ever since.
I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on September 1st, 2022. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have a published agenda and consent agenda. Are there any changes? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as published and consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. We have an agenda and approved consent agenda. And so, next up is a public comment on, and we currently don't have anyone signed up for public comment, but if there's anyone wishing to address this council, now's your time. Seeing none, we'll go to our next agenda, which is a public hearing on the Hercules Lake Comer Agreement.
I just need to make sure, Dave, do you need to say the hearing's now open or anything like that?
So I, I will, I will, we can listen to the not open the hearing, or does it doesn't matter which goes up?
I defer to.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I will open up this public hearing on, on this Lake Comer's agreement. It's now open.
Okay. So in your packets, you have the detailed staff report and also the draft street Lake Comer agreement. What I was gonna do tonight is just give you kind of a overview of the history of how we got here, and then also the highlights of the agreement itself. So on August 13th, 2015, Schneider Homes obtained project approval for a 76 multifamily unit development on 31st Avenue and what is now Hercules Drive. Construction of Hercules Drive curb-to-curb from just south of Salish Middle School to 31st Avenue was made a condition of the approval of that project. February 19th, 2016, Schneider Homes obtained civil drawing approval for their project. On March 26th, 2020, Schneider Homes obtained final Public Works approval for their project. What that means is they installed all the improvements and they were approved by the city. On August 11th, 2016, City Council approved Section 12.30 of the Lacey Municipal Code, providing requirements for the formation of street Lake Comer agreements. And then, as a condition of the street Lake Comer agreement, a public hearing is required. So that's what we're doing tonight. Okay? The highlight to the agreement, there's actually only two parcels in the agreement. One is owned by Schneider Homes. The other one is by YUS LLC. The parcel numbers are 118-01-230203, which is the Schneider Homes one, and 118-01-230205, which is the YUS one. Each of the parcels in the Lake Comer agreement are assessed $69,786.50 for their half of the Hercules Drive. Schneider Homes built the road, so they marked their parcels being paid, and that amount would be owed for the YUS parcel. Also, the city, during the negotiations of the project, the city ended up purchasing right-of-way from YUS in the amount of $57,050. So with this Lake Comer agreement, if YUS develops their property before March 26th, 2035, they will repay the City of Lacey $57,050 for what we paid to them for the right-of-way. YUS was notified of the hearing today by registered mail, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I do, would like to open now for questions, and I don't think we have anybody here present representing YUS in the council chamber tonight. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions from this council? I, I guess my, my question is, is if this is passed, will they, will YES?
YUS.
YUS, will they owe the $57,000 if this was to pass and this Lake Comer's agreement gets into, comes into effect?
Only if they develop within the next 15 years. So in the ordinance, street Lake Comers are, they are in, in effect for 15 years. So that's, that's why I mentioned the date of March 26th, 2035. That's the date that the 15 years will be up. So if anybody develops in that time, then they will be responsible for paying Schneider Homes back their, their portion and us back for the right-of-way purchase.
Got it. Go ahead.
So it's the 69 that they would owe on the, on the, on that agreement, plus the 57, or?
That's correct. Yep. Both, both of them are owed.
And if title is passed from one person to another?
It goes with the property.
So it just, it transfers with title?
Yes. Yeah.
Do we, do we hear anything from, from the affected?
Yes, we've had conversations with the attorney for them. They've been well represented throughout this process. And I suspect they're not here because they didn't have any further comments. We, we explained a lot of things. We actually made some adjustments at their request, technical details. But they're well informed of the agreement and of this hearing.
Okay.
And they have no, no major issues with it, obviously, since they're not here? Yeah, not really, not really a question. Rhetorical question.
That's a rhetorical question. Anything else from this council?
So is it, is it, are we, as, as a city, holding a spot on that title until 20 whatever? And then, how does that?
This agreement will be recorded, and so it'll run with the title, the Lake Comer agreement will. And I'll just add, this council adopted Lacey Municipal Code, Chapter 12.30, in 2016, as Tom mentioned. This is the first street Lake Comer agreement that the city's ever entered. There's numerous utility Lake Comer agreements for, you know, utilities. But this is the first street Lake Comer agreement.
Oh, that's hard, that's hard to believe.
And I'll just remind council that we'll need to close the public hearing before we take any action.
Absolutely. Well, this was, is there anything else from this council? Then I will close this public hearing on the Hercules Lake Comer Agreement, ordinance number 1622. And I think our next action is under ordinances, and this is the first ordinance up, ordinance 1622, the Hercules Lake Comer's agreement.
I would make a motion to approve, to adopt the ordinance number 1622, establishing an assessment of reimbursement areas specifying the terms and conditions of the city's involvement and directing the city manager to enter into a reimbursement agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I guess my only other question is, is prior to 2016, when we, I do remember coming up with this Lake Comer's agreement, what was the city's practice on, on this?
You mean like if, if somebody was?
Was forced to build a, a street and there was no, obviously, agreement in place where they just first went in, had, had to cover the cost?
Yeah, so what happened was we had a lot of half-streets.
Yeah, we did. That's right.
So some of the problems that we were having was, like, even across the street, 4th Avenue, I mean, they built part of it, and it just sat there. We had, what's that?
Half Nelson?
Yeah.
Half Nelson.
Half Nelson? Yeah, Nelson Street. And there, there's a couple other ones. Callisons, whenever they built their, their road, that's, that's the most notable one that you're like, we don't want to do this anymore, because you see the road and it's kind of jogged and all that. But we did a lot of half-streets. And so we've, and this is through the direction of Scott Egger, we're, we're saying, hey, if we're gonna do this now, we went back in, I think, 2017, and changed it so that you do have to do, at least, if you're not building the road, at least dedicate the right-of-way for it, you know, so it can get built. And in this case, doing the road was made a condition of approval of the multifamily project, and that's why it needed to go in. So, yeah, it was, it was just you didn't have complete streets.
Yeah, I do, I do, I can recall several streets around Lacey that are half-streets, and you're like, what's going on here? I have a street and curving sidewalk and nothing on the other side. Yeah, that didn't make sense, so.
Right. And this helps us with, as developers want to develop, it gives them another tool that if they can't afford to do it, then they can try to recover their money. And like Dave mentioned, we have lots of water and sewer Lake Comers. And what I don't, don't know the difference, but those don't come before council, but street Lake Comers do. So anyway, that's why you haven't seen a Lake Comer before today.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1620, 1622, the Hercules Lake Comer Agreement. All of those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you very much.
And next up, under ordinances, is the 2022 budget amendment. Troy?
Great, thank you, Mr. Rider. Good evening, council. For your consideration tonight, it is an ordinance that will amend the 2022 budget. Historically, we've come to the council this time of year to make our final amendments to the budget, so we'll have a good comparison with our next year's proposed budget. I will remind the council that we did have an out-of-cycle amendment back in April. We just had so many significant changes to the budget. We wanted to maintain the integrity of the budget, so we came to the council early. But I hope this will be the last amendment for the year as we go forward. I'd like to cover some of the more significant amendments tonight, but you do have a full detailed list of the, all the amendments as Exhibit A to the ordinance. Looking at the general fund first, we do have three positions that are in this amendment. We have a human resource analyst position. As you know, the workforce and the challenges there have been great, and this is a department that is dealing with some vacancies at this point, so we're adding staff to deal with that workload. There's a transportation civil engineer proposed. This is really to address kind of a backlog of transportation projects. Most of these projects will, or most of the salary of this position will be funded by those capital projects. And then the final position is a general level maintenance technician within our facilities maintenance division. We're really just a growing city, and there's more facilities to take care of, and we just need more staff to handle that. Also included in the amendment is a $300,000, and really an investment into the maker space. Back in April, this council approved a total of $500,000 of strategic investment reserves to be invested into the, into the maker space. $300,000, of course, for capital equipment. $200,000 will be in next year's budget, and that will be for operations, operational support for 2023. Looking at the transportation benefit district fund, of course, this is the voter-approved sales tax. Really, this, it's not adding money to the budget, but we're really shifting from the overlay program into the sidewalk program. We have a pretty significant delay with some of our overlay projects due to supply chain issues in our utilities. So we're really just focusing more on sidewalks for the remainder of this year. I do have a bit of good news within our government, our general obligation bond fund. This is a fund that we typically don't talk about, because we haven't issued debts since, I think, 2010. But in, in preparing for the police station project and potential debt, with that, I was looking at really getting these funds set up and kind of cleaned up a little bit. And there's about $300,000 of reserve in this fund. We'd like to suggest that we take this $314,000, invest that into the, the property acquisition and design of the police station, thus saving other reserves. That will really give us a clean slate. We'll start at kind of ground zero in terms of going forward with any future debt. So again, I think that's kind of a, kind of a win for us. Within our building improvement fund, we have a $185,000 request. Really kind of a change in scope to our, our building access control project. We want some integration with the new police station, the new museums, so we're adding to the scope of that project. Parks and open space, we're requesting an additional $74,000 related to the design of the great Kyo Park Phase 1A. We really need to address the design of a large picnic structure, prepare a vegetation plan. We need a little more detail in terms of delineation with the 31st Avenue alignment project, so a little more money there. Within the rack capital, we have a request for an additional $84,000. This really speaks to, you know, what we're dealing with as an organization in terms of workforce challenges. We, we have currently in the budget $125,000 for the design of the rack parking lot expansion. But we don't have the capacity internally to do that. So the $125,000 was the estimate for our own engineers to design that. We're going to find a consultant to help us design that, so that will be an additional $84,000. My final comments are on the equipment rental fund. Again, we're having supply chain issues across the city. This very much speaks to that. So we have two amendments in equipment rental. This is where we manage our fleet. We buy our, our vehicles and, and heavy equipment within this fund. The first amendment is an additional $159,000. This is just a 20% increase on the current replacement budget. We just want to be prepared for additional canceled orders. So we've already experienced some canceled orders to vehicles, that we basically placed those orders earlier this year. We still need those replacements, so we're reordering those, and they're coming with about a 20% markup. So we just really want the flexibility to make sure we could get those orders in and, and keep our place in line on those orders. The second amendment also, again, has to do with the supply chain issue. We are actually having to order some of our replacements for next year now. So the, the Ford F1 Lightning, we're, we're starting our transition to electric vehicles. And the orders for 2023 vehicles actually closed August 31st. So we want to make sure and maintain the integrity of the budget, replace those orders. We don't have any expectation we're gonna spend. replace those orders. We don't have any expectation we're going to spend that money this year. But again, we want to make sure that we're authorized to, to make those purchases. So, those are the significant amendments. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but of course, the recommendation would be to adopt ordinance amending the 2022 budget.
Go ahead.
I want to make just one comment related to the F-150 Lightnings. There's been some discussion in the press about the city's apparently spent money, but then somehow they were canceled. I just want to make very clear that we have the ability as a city to buy off the state contract, which is beneficial to the public, so we get the best possible price. But an order is just an order. It doesn't mean that, that transaction can be filled if there are no trucks. So, again, we, just like a customer, if you try to order something that's not available, we have to wait in line too. But I think there's been some misinformation about, did we spend money, and now we have to pay a higher price? It's, we, we too have to follow the rules of the market, and we can only buy what's available. So, I just want to make sure what it means to buy off the state contract, it is beneficial. No one did anything wrong. They just were not available due to supply chain issues and availability to the market.
So, we, we made an order, they couldn't fulfill it?
Correct.
And so now going to the next year, and they're, they're higher, but we can't hold them to the old order price?
Correct. Right.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I would move that we adopt ordinance amending the 2022 budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
I have a question, Troy. I know that we have, and this is not listed on the amendments to the budget currently, but we have a .5 FTE dedicated to climate-related policy work, and it's part of our climate mitigation plan for Lacey. I've gotten questions from residents about what we're doing with that money. And I, I believe that currently we're devoting it to programs that already exist that have a beneficial impact on our climate priorities. But the folks I've talked to indicated that they're very interested in us having a person, like a, a full FTE dedicated to working on climate policy in partnership with the other jurisdictions. So, if we wanted to pursue that, what would the process look like to increase that to, from a .5 FTE to a whole FTE and an actual person?
So, I-
In this current year, or, we, we do have a request in for next year for a sustainability coordinator, which I believe is the same position. It's, you know, normally, we, we go through the budget process, and, you know, whether it's, you know, moves forward or not, we do have 19 position requests for next year, so there is a lot of competing interest. But, I mean, I think you could amend this ordinance if you want to do a mid-year change. That's not typically how we, we go about that, but that's certainly, you know, allowable, you know, by the council. It's, it's your budget, really, so.
I, I do know that, as, as Troy pointed out, and I've looked into this a little bit as well. I know, I know that Rick is requesting a full-time in the budget, and I, I'm really interested in hearing about what we're going to be doing with that person, right? Like, what's our next step? And I've been having this conversation with our, our city manager recently too, saying, you know, where, where are we at in this process? Because the, the council, we've all, what we've been, been talking about, and we've sort of heard, is that we're going to be setting up a, you know, a grant program, and that's sort of the things that we're going to be doing in Lacey to, to, you know, dedicate Lacey to, to this issue. And I just don't know where we're at in that process either. I guess, now, see, is Rick around?
No, you're stuck, you're stuck with me.
Okay, Scott. Can you tell us where we're at in that process? Because obviously, I've been talking to you about this quite a bit.
So, we are correct. We do have a point, .5 FTE within the budget. We also have $200,000 dedicated to basically programs or initiatives. The original thought was we were going to hire a halftime position, and in thinking about this, we thought, could we not take advantage of existing programs and basically apply and leverage the $200,000 on existing programs? So, if PSC has a winterization program, let's take advantage of that. It's already being administered, and we could basically leverage our limited dollars to maximum benefit. That was the, the thought. I know Hans has been working on this issue, investigating what programs are available to the public and see how we can best apply our $200,000. Troy is correct. We do have a budget request for a full-time coordinator for the 2023 budget. That'll be a discussion point during the workshop. And I think at some point, I think council's indicated, that we continue to do one-time capital investments in basically initiatives to help and address climate change and the climate change initiative, not to mention the TRPC initiative, which is more of a regional effort, which is also informing these decisions on a countywide basis.
I think one of the things that I'm concerned about is that, you know, you mentioned that Rick is working on this issue, and Hans is working on this issue, and I think Grant is working on this issue. Having a dedicated staff person might free up the time of our other community and economic development staffers to work on the host of other council's strategic priorities that they face. That was one of my thoughts. It's not to diminish the work that we're already doing, but I know that those folks in community and economic development have a lot on their plates. And so, having someone focused on this one complicated issue could let them work, focus more of their time on those other things.
So, what would be your recommendation, Scott?
I mean, my preference would be to the budget workshop and have a full discussion about where council wants to go with this thing. I don't, with respect to the request, I think it's important to remember that we've made a lot of investment and progress in this arena. We were one of the first cities to actually have a climate action plan. We were the first to do be a green power community. So, that means all city operations, including our streetlights and utilities, are green power. We are going to propose probably 15 vehicles to be EVs for the 2023 period to meet our goals of electrifying the fleet. Council passed a half million dollar investment for EV charging stations. So, there are a number of things that we are going. We're just trying to make sure that we're applying the best use of the dollars that we have to the maximum benefit. And, again, this is a good discussion point for maybe a budget workshop.
Yes, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Is this the sort of thing that we could repurpose some of our ARPA dollars towards? Because those are, I know, one-time funds, and creating an FTE is an ongoing cost, but we've also had a practice of establishing two- to three-year contract positions that are temporary. We have ARPA dollars that are intended for infrastructure investments. I see alignment between some of our environmental policy priorities and some of our infrastructure investments, like making our systems more efficient. So, could we create a temporary position with ARPA dollars to do some of this work in the short term?
And you're right. It has been a while since we heard what we're going to do, even do with our ARPA dollars, you know? I don't, I am a little worried that those ARPA dollars are out there, and they haven't been obligated yet. And I have a feeling, if we don't obligate those, they could easily be taken back. So, what, what is the plan with ARPA dollars?
So, I think last time we spoke about ARPA dollars, we were talking about making investments in affordable housing. Last time we spoke in general, we talked about our council priorities, and I think there was a discussion point, can we revisit where we want to direct those ARPA dollars? And again, a discussion is ripe to discuss at the budget workshop to say, what do we do with that $6.8 million?
Can you remind this council when we're going to have that budget workshop?
I think it's October 6th.
So, a little over a month.
Right. And to Scott's point, you know, we had talked about holding on to that to develop permanent supportive housing, which has been sort of the mantra on addressing homelessness. And with the new influx of state money that's come in, we no longer need to use that ARPA money for that purpose. So, it frees that up. And this will be a very timely discussion, because we need to get the money planned for and encumbered.
Well, my recommendation, I, I guess I'll follow you, Scott, is that we have a more of an in-depth conversation about this at our budget workshop next month on October 6th.
Well, I would like to echo support for Robin's proposal. I, I don't see how we can realistically do it tonight, but definitely, I'd like to make that a big priority in the budget.
I would agree. I look forward to having that conversation. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance amending the 2022 budget. It's ordinance 1623. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Let's go on to our next agenda item, which is the mayor's report. And we've been busy interviewing people for the historic commission. We've, it's been an interesting time. We had some people come off the historic commission. We've been, had some openings. We finally were able to interview several really great candidates. And I do have a recommendation that will, I think, get us to full, fully staffed on the historic commission after this. And my, my motion would be to appoint Edward Holm, Kevin Wykoff, and Tulay Patin to the, to the historic commission for their first-time appointment, and to reappoint Alan Tyler to another term on the historic commission. So, I'm making this all one motion for its sake of ease.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm not sure. We, you want, is, Ed's here? You want to come up and introduce yourself, Ed?
No, I'm-
Okay. We, yeah, we appreciate you being here. We had some, we interviewed some really great candidates, and Ed, you, wonderful. Is there any other discussion?
Where do they take their positions?
As soon as we agree with this motion, and I, I sign, sign it, and we'll, they'll be appointed here pretty quick. Any further discussion?
Just happy to see those filled.
Really? I know. We've had, they've had some openings for a while, so it's really great to see it filled. So, all in favor of my motion for those appointments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. Thank you, and welcome. S- we know you will. City manager? Then we're going to go straight into boards, commissions, and committee reports. And I am up first, and I do not have a report. Detective Mayor?
I do not have a report.
Councilmember Cox?
I will make up for that with two reports. The Climate Steering Committee met on August 22nd. A good chunk of the meeting was devoted to filling some spots on this new advisory committee that's going to be making recommendations on climate actions. They're currently recruiting for what, two, what's called frontline members, and that's essentially people who come from disadvantaged parts of the area, so that we make sure we get equity and representation there. In order to make this succeed, since it's a new, new committee, we decided to make the, everyone's terms for the first year, one year, and then they could be reappointed in June to three-year terms. So, we're trying to create a staggering, but we also, since there's some that are intentionally not going to be filled immediately, we didn't want to have like three-year gaps. And we are recommending one of our own city staff, Lindsay Fields, to the committee. And it was checked into whether municipal employees could serve, and it was decided that this would be settled on a case-by-case basis. So, we're happy to welcome Lindsay. I think she will bring a great perspective to it. We also had a presentation on electric vehicles and other legislation updates and opportunities with the new Inflation Reduction Act. We're obviously wanting to reduce vehicle emissions by using electrical vehicles, but we're also wanting to reduce the vehicle miles traveled. Other strategies include denser land use, increased telework, increased use of public transit, and alternatives such as walking and biking. Trends are moving more to battery-electric and hybrid plugins. Apparently, we will be seeing a few hydrogen fuel cell vehicles, but that's a little further out. Currently, 1% of all vehicles in Thurston County are electric hybrid. And we need to, in order to grow the number of EVs on the road, we're going to need to significantly increase the number of public fast-charging stations across the county. It's not just here in Lacey. So, the state is going to receive $71 million over five years in federal funding for this type of infrastructure. There'll be $10 million the first year, and 40% must be invested in disadvantaged communities under the new equity rule. So, I'm hoping we can get our share of that money. And it's interesting that the Inflation Reduction Act is modeled to reduce carbon emissions to 40% below 2005 levels by 2030. I think we're significantly ahead of that here. So, that's pretty much it for climate. And then Regional Housing Council met on the 24th of August. We got an update on the right-of-way funding. Our tech team is meeting with state and local partners, as well as social service providers. There are a few individuals left on rights-of-way east of Olympia, and including Lacey. Next focus is going to be the camps downtown. We have a little bit of a wrinkle, and I don't have, you know, it may have, the environment may have shifted a little bit since this meeting. But Commerce has let us know that instead of the county and the Regional Housing Council being able to contract for the motel purchase and operation, the state wants to directly work with the Low Income Housing Institute, which is going to be the entity that will operate it, and bypass local control on it. We've expressed some concerns about that, and there may be more that I just don't, I'm not privy to yet, but.
Yeah, I, of course, I've been up to date on this. I, I think at the end of the day, I'm less concerned about who purchases it, and more interested in the operating agreement and how it's run. And so, I think that's one of the things that I've been talking to the city manager about, as this, as you said, it's a very, very fast-moving. Who, who buys it at the end is, you know, I think, whether the county buys it, or the city, you know, how the funds get transferred to purchase it is, again, you know, less, less of a deal that, so, and it, we don't have much of a say anyway on that, so it is what it is. But we do have a say on the operating agreement side of things, and so that's what we're going to have to keep, keep talking about.
Right. And we have, we have put in our, putting pressure on the state to say, hey, you know?
I would just say, we need to continue whatever pressure we need. We have to be involved in the operation.
Yep.
If we leave that to the state, that will be a disaster.
Well, that's, that's the concern about, and the county's on board with that. Everyone's on board with us on that. So, it's not just Lacey saying that. So, we're all on the same page.
Right. Okay. We also had a discussion about short-term governance structure for the Housing Council. And this is going to look like probably incorporating some memberships of the Thurston Thrives Housing Action Team as non-voting members, a lived experience steering committee, and incorporating, I don't know if it'll be some members of Olympia's Home Fund Advisory Committee, but we will have to have a Home Fund Advisory Committee to go with that as well. The Housing Council Executive Administration Operational Staff, they want to add an affordable housing manager and communications specialist, continue with the partners, providing a technical team. And they hope to flush out the structure in September, and in October, bring in nominations, and have the first meetings of this steering committee in November, at which point they'll start developing priorities in time for a January vote. So, things are moving, and I'm really happy to see that, because it's been a long, slow slog trying to get to this point. And eventually, we're going to try to become our own entity, something on the order of the animal, Jazzcom Animal Services. But this is the interim step. So, that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report.
And I haven't heard from Councilmember Stedman. I hope, I hope you're okay. I'm not sure. I haven't, I haven't heard from him. So, Councilmember Kunkel?
I also have no report.
Councilmember Vasquez?
I have one brief report, so no report on ORCA, no report on-
So no report on ORCA, no report on the Thurston Regional Planning Council because the meeting is tomorrow morning. Have not had a meeting for the other board I'm on lately.
Transit.
Transit, thank you. It's like intercity transit. We haven't had a meeting. But I did want to provide a quick update on the Board of Health. So I was appointed to the Thurston County Board of Health, but the board is not yet fully filled with people yet. So legislation recently expanded the local health jurisdiction, the boards. We anticipate being fully staffed at eight members. So currently, we have four, and we will be identifying four more members. We're doing interviews. We had applicants apply through the mid-part of last week. We're doing the interviews to identify the lucky three folks from the community on Tuesday, September 6th. And we need someone who is a public health recipient or someone who's used public health services. We're looking for someone else who is a public health provider, like a medical provider, licensed medical professional, someone who's affiliated with a stakeholder group or a community organization, military business, advocacy. And then one slot is set aside for a tribal representative. So once we are fully staffed, we're talking about identifying who the chair will be because up until now, the chair of the Board of Health has been the chair of the county commissioners, but the structure is changing. I went to the Washington State Association of Local Health Organizations, or WASALFO, terrible acronym, and I was there for their, the first day of their two-day orientation. Yesterday, I flew out to Spokane. It was very interesting because there's a host of different folks there, right? County commissioners, newly-appointed members like me. We had two legislators there who'd been very involved in public health policy for the last several years. And a lot of folks were kind of in the same places, those of us coming from Thurston County, where we're expanding all of the local health jurisdictions, all of the boards, at the same moment, and a lot of people were like, how is this going to work? What are we doing? But it was excellent training on things like public records retention and the role of boards of health and people on the boards of health in our communities to make sure that we're providing foundational public health services. So really good training. I was bummed I could only be there for the first day of a two-day training because I had to come back. Other things to report out on? I'll save reports out on monkeypox and COVID for the next time I share about this board appointment. So look forward to that, and that's my only report.
With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. I know there's a lot.
I can show you is out.
Okay, oh, good. Councilmember is out. So he had to excuse absence. Anyway, I do know the Board of Public Health, it's one of those good things, like it was a good idea to have all these diverse people, but then to actually try to get people who fits those qualifications, and some of them are somewhat obscure, as you know, someone who uses this, we all sort of use the system. So anyway, and the other question is, on the tribal side, are they going to just rotate through the three tribes within Thurston County? We don't know about that yet, either. Okay, well, good luck with that. I'm sure we appreciate you taking this on its first year, so best luck. Anyway, we have reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.